Good evening and welcome to the October 11th, 2022 New Bern Board of Alderman meeting. The prayer tonight will be coordinated by Alderman Royal.
Thank you Mayor Odom, Pastor Yvonne Armand from East Coast Coalition of Pastors will direct us in prayer.
Good evening Mayor, good evening Board of Alderman. Let us pray. Father, we thank and praise you God for allowing us to be here this evening. Thank and praise you for your presence because we need you. We're asking God for your leadership. Father, we're asking God that you would bring these Aldermen together with the mayor. And God that they would hear those things that are necessary and important for them to follow. We ask God that you continue to keep them together, keep them in all of their ways. Ask God that you leave and get this meeting, make it be what it ought to be. And Father, we ask that you intervene in those things that are necessary. We thank you and we praise you in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Do you please join me in the pledge, flag of our country?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Alderman Prill?
Here.
Alderman Royal?
Here.
Alderman Astor?
Here.
Mayor Odom?
Here.
Alderman Kinsey?
Here.
Alderman Best?
Present.
Alderman Brinson?
Here.
As they would have had an opportunity to look at the agenda, if so, entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, have a second and a discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right. Madam Clerk, any petition of citizens?
Thank you.
We have David Leisure. Okay, Leisure, if you would just come to the mic and state your name and address for the record, please. You have four minutes.
Thank you and good evening. David Leisure, 2906 Badegression Lane, Lakeview subdivision. I'm asking for the builder of the Lakeview sub, NCCI. They failed to address improperly graded and placed drainage swells causing localized flooding in yards of my neighbors as well as ours. And also failing to address structural concerns in a timely manner. The condition of Badegression Lane with unpatched repair work, some as old as six or seven weeks. Speeders on Badegression, they seem to think it's a racetrack. And the timing of the traffic light at Highway 70 in Carolina colors, when I tried to come over here tonight, less than 10 seconds green light for Thomas Road. What I would like to see done is to have the builder address and to correct the drainage issues, fix my house, patch holes in the road left by the contractors, as I indicated a moment ago, some as old as six or seven weeks. Lengthen the traffic light cycle times on Thurman Road and have a police presence on Badegression. Hopefully with an unmarked car. I understand they don't have one now, but maybe provide funding so they can get an unmarked car to get the speeders. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sure Alderman Astor will be in touch with you. I'll pass along your permission. Yep, it's right here. Thank you. Is that all?
Okay.
Move on to the consent agenda.
Mayor, there's no questions, comments? I'd like to make a motion to adopt the agenda as is.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any comments, discussion? Well, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Prill.
Alderman Prill?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes. Item number nine, consider adopting a resolution approving the 2022 New Bern Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan.
Mayor, at this time I'd like to ask Kim Maxi, our MPO Administrator, to come up and make this presentation.
I see you brought backup.
I did, of course I did.
Sorry.
You know she's really brains behind this whole thing anyway. So, thank you very much for those of you whom I have not yet met yet. I am Kimberly Maxi. I am the New Bern area MPO Administrator. I have with me tonight Felicia McCrea, who is the MPO Planner. And tonight we are here to talk about the update to the New Bern Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan. So, a little bit about the MPO, we're a federally funded transportation planning organization. We have five member agencies, one of which is the city of New Bern. We also have Bridgeton, Riverbend, Trent Woods, and portions of Craven County that make up our MPO. We assist in planning for multimodal transportation. One of the things that we can do is help update or create new plans, which is what we have done for the city. So, the MPO provided funding for an update to the city's plan. Previously it was two plans and now we've kind of combined it into one. A few years ago, we did the same thing for Bridgeton and Riverbend who did not have plans. So, we funded new plans for both of those member agencies as well. So, tonight we're just going to kind of do a brief overview. Hopefully you've had a chance to look it over. So, about a year ago, the city of New Bern and the MPO began discussions about updating this plan. We created a steering committee and we held three meetings. The first was in September of last year and the last was in May of this year. Outta Planning and Design out of Raleigh was our consulting firm and they compiled data, put together a draft plan that we provided for public review on our MPO social media pages, on our website. The city did the same and I believe the Parks and Rec Department did the same as well. So, the draft plan was then presented earlier this year in a public involvement session and the comments from that public involvement session were also incorporated into the plan. So, then the final plan was completed and comes before you now for adoption. So, the steering committee that we put together was excellent, very engaged. Obviously, it was MPO staff and consulting staff. George Childs from Public Works, David Daniels from the Police Department, Mayor Odom, who at that time represented the Board of Alderman and was also the Vice Chairman on the MPO Policy Board, Carrie Warren from Parks and Recreation, Kelly Walker from the Transit System Carts, and then we also had representation from NC DOT Division Two as well. So, the first chapter is really just an introduction, obviously. It will, it goes into the history of the plans that were previously in place and it talks about the existing infrastructure that the city of New Bern has. It provides a framework to continue expanding and improving connections for bicycle and pedestrians. And in the initial discussions with the city, they mentioned they wanted to have a core designated area that then they could build out from to ensure the connections that they needed to cover the community. So, also within this, obviously, we had to come up with vision and goals. The goals included safety, equity, environmental considerations, connectivity, as well as economic development. The second chapter talks about existing conditions. So, obviously, in order to figure out what we need, we have to kind of look at what's there and also look at what's not there. So, New Bern is very unique in the fact that the topography is flat, right? So, it just provides, it supports and enhances naturally bicycling and walking within its community. Downtown provides excellent opportunities for connections to local businesses, to historic landmarks, to the waterways. Obviously, there are gaps in the infrastructure. We can't get from downtown, for example, to other parts of the city. So, those are things that this plan will address. Safety is another, one of the big obstacles that bicyclists and pedestrians face. So, also in this chapter are some safety data for both bicyclists and pedestrians. So, this is something that the city will want to take into consideration as they determine what type of facilities are needed to best provide not only connectivity for their residents, but also safe passage. Chapter three talks about infrastructure recommendations. So, this will dive into the varying facility types that will then touch on some of the safety features that you need, what's best suited for each particular area, and so on. The next few slides within this chapter, I will just kind of skim over. Hopefully you've had a chance to look at them, but it just kind of shows how comprehensive this plan is in providing what is there, what isn't there, their recommendations of what they propose would work well. And while not shown in this PowerPoint, considerations in the plan are also given for connections with Taberna and Carolina colors as well. So, hopefully you've had a chance to look through those. So, chapter four provides program recommendations. This chapter focuses on the best way to implement the changes that you want to see within your community. It provides examples to other North Carolina communities of similar size that have done the same thing that I think, you know, would give good examples for what would work for the city. Chapter five focuses on policy recommendations. So, these are suggestions that, on things that the city can do. For example, implementing land use and transportation policies, setting design standards, developing regulations that promote walkable, bikeable developments. There's also verbiage suggestions for updates to the city's Code of Ordinances in this chapter as well. And then, of course, the final chapter focuses on implementation. So, this provides guidance on the steps that the city can take for viable implementation of infrastructure improvements. Change like this, I believe, is going to require a champion. It's going to take a leader that can provide leadership and dedication to implementing the changes that you want to see, but also in finding alternative ways to fund it. And we'll get into that in just a minute. This is a plan. It's, it's just that, it's a plan to guide the city in creating the infrastructure that you want to have. So, how you choose to utilize it and where you choose to start, we can certainly be instrumental in those, in that dialogue, but this is for you, the city, to determine what you want to do with it. As far as funding goes, Appendix B in this document, which is not provided in this PowerPoint, provides excellent information on the multitude of funding options available. So, I think that you will find really good information on grant opportunities and obviously with the IIJA money, there's a lot of funding out there right now that has not previously existed and perhaps will not exist again in the future. The MPO can include bicycle and pedestrian projects within our prioritization process, but it takes a long time for us to follow the steps we have to follow. And Mayor Odom knows this all too well. When we think about transportation planning, it's important for you to remember that short-term planning in a transportation world is a decade and long-term planning is 25 years. So, we just finished our long-range transportation plan called, Envision 2045. So, Trent Woods, for example, one of our member agencies, they didn't want to wait to go through the steps that we have to follow. And so, they found alternative funding sources and grants and, and they have just taken off with their bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure, utilizing their own methods and their own funding sources. So, that's something to take into consideration. Again, we are here to help you. But, anything that we accomplish through our prioritization process requires a 20% match from the city as well. So, that's important to remember. We had a request for information on things that have been accomplished since the 2006 and 2009 plans were implemented. We were not, the MPO was not created until 2013. So, anything prior to 2013 is not information that we are privy to necessarily. That's probably something that somewhere in the city, there might be some records if there were things that were accomplished in those initial plans. I can tell you that since the creation of the MPO in 2013, we have funded multi-use paths on both sides of Glen Burnie, from Elizabeth Avenue to News Boulevard. We resurfaced First Street and provided bicycle lanes and also sidewalks on both sides that connected from Broad to the Volt Center. The city then picked that project up and finished over the bridge over 70 into Pembroke. So, that was excellent. The city also provided a sidewalk on News Boulevard from the hospital to Glen Burnie Road. I believe there were some extensions to the Riverwalk along Lawson's Creek. The repaving of Trent Woods provided bicycle lanes on either side of that as well and, and some sharrows and, and shared bike space along a portion of Pollock as well. And then I know Old Airport Road was repaved, widening the shoulders. I'm not sure that was specifically for bicyclists, but it certainly helped. But I don't, I think that there's more work that can be done for the safety of, of the many bicyclists that utilize that corridor. So, I think, hopefully you've had a chance to, to go through the plan. I think it's a very comprehensive plan. I think the recommendations are outstanding. And if I can answer any questions for you, I would be happy to try.
We'll have questions.
There, I have a couple of questions if I could.
Sure.
If I, if I, in reviewing the plan, and you've just indicated that currently there, there is a fair amount of money available to communities to go after and that the municipality would be obligated to fund 20% of it, but the other 80% would be free money.
That's, that, there's a, that's a misnomer, but I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt. If it's, if projects are funded through the MPO and the process that we follow, there's an 80-20 split. When it comes to the grant funding, that's going to depend on the grant and the opportunities that are presented through that grant.
So, the grant funds will vary?
Correct.
Okay. I would hope, I mean, given that there is the potential of getting 80% of a, of a project cost paid for with other money, I would hope, Mr., Mr. Hughes, that the city is aggressively looking at every opportunity to implement recommendations of the plan and go after that money. And I guess the follow-up question is, are there time limits on when that money has to be spent?
If you're applying for grant funding?
Whether it's grants or whether it's the other money working through your agency.
So, there are no time restraints necessarily from the MPO standpoint. We are, we rely on the state to, to let us know when our funding comes into play, which is why sometimes it takes much longer. I mean, it's been 25 years since, you know, NC 43 or Havelock or James City have even been discussed and you're just now seeing those underway. So, yes, we can put things in our, in our plan and we can prioritize those and they can be funded in the STIP, but it doesn't mean, that's the State Transportation Improvement Plan, that's what they work off, it's a fiscally constrained document. That does not mean that you're going to see that project take off within a decade. So, that's what I mean. There's, we are very slow in accomplishing what we can unless we can find alternative methods to have something funded. And we can certainly do that and sometimes things are sped up and sometimes they're not. So, there's always an opportunity. It's a quantitative and qualitative process. So, it puts a lot of data into a, a program essentially that then has to sift through all of that and determine how many accidents are there, how many bicyclists are there, how many cars are on this road. So, it's a very convoluted process of determining what's funded and what meets the criteria to be funded and what isn't. Does that make sense?
Well, it, it does. And I was looking at more the backend side of it in terms of if, if New Bern were to go after some funding and were awarded funding. We might not see that funding for X number of years, whatever, but we're not going to be really pressured to complete that project, say, within a very short period of time. It might be a few years down the road before we even see the money and implement that project. And if that's the case, then, again, it, it kind of gets back to aggressively going after funding now and we, which might still be there five years down the road, 10 years down the road, unspent, but that's fine because we're working on the projects.
True.
And it's going to take time to make those improvements. So, if that fits, I mean, I, again, it's just a recommendation that I, hopefully that we are aggressively going after this money now, which could be committed to the city over the next however many years.
And Alderman, to add your comments, the city is quite aggressive at, at, at grant funds. Currently, I believe we've got about 57 grants that we have received, maybe 58 now with the last Golden Leaf grant. So, we have staff constantly looking at those things. On average, with a state and federal grant, we're looking at a two to three-year time limit for once we receive a grant to, to complete the project. The majority of those grants are reimbursable, so we have to fund that upfront and then we're reimbursed after the project is completed. So, having this adopted plan in place is one of the, one of the big steps and it always gains a lot of points when we fill out those grant applications. Yes, we have a plan in place and we already know where we're going to be going with putting some of these sidewalks and, and connectivity in place.
Kim, maybe it would be helpful if you could just speak to your experience. So, if the city were to get a project approved through the STIP process, what's the best case and a worst-case scenario on timing of when that funding would become available?
The best-case scenario is that you could have funds allocated for two years out. That would start your, any utility acquisition, any right-of-way acquisition, any easement needs. That would cover all of the, all of that. You might see construction within three years. Worst-case scenario could be that it's in the second half or the developmental phase of this transportation improvement program and it's, even though it's there, it's not technically funded and we have to rescore, which kind of starts it all over again. So, that's when you're kind of looking at, it could be 10 years out to even start right-of-way acquisition, any of those things. So, I do know that some of the grant funds that I'm familiar with through federal transit administration and the other governmental agencies do, requires certain things to be shovel-ready. They also do put, you know, a limit on how long it takes for something to get done. But it is, as the city manager said, it's usually on a reimbursement-type basis and it's a little more, I'm not going to say lenient, that's not the correct word, but you do have a little wiggle room in there. So, does that help?
Yes.
Sorry, I kind of digressed.
One, one follow-up question if I could. Are you aware, are there any statistics out there, studies out there that do have done comparisons between communities that are, I don't know, I don't know if there are certifications or just designations that are given to communities that they're, they're, they've achieved sort of a walkability standpoint or, you know, cyclist, you know, criteria? So, a comparison between those communities that, that have it and those that don't in terms of, say, population growth?
Sure. I, off the top of my head, can think of one that we were talking about today. I'm not sure that it, how well it actually compares to communities. I would assume that that data would be available. That is something that I would be happy to see if I could find out for you and get back with you on, on what's out there. There are so many competitive things that, that communities can do to be, to be designated and recognized as you're discussing, that I think that New Bern absolutely has a huge opportunity that has previously been missed. And now we hear a lot, as far as the MPO goes, we hear people want to bike, people want to walk, and people want a viable transit system. Those are the three biggest things that we hear right now. It's not vehicular anymore, it's not, you know, our airport's doing a wonderful job on improving. So, those are the three top things that we hear. So, I think we could definitely work to improve New Bern in those categories. And I'd be happy to see if I could find some data for you.
All right, thank you.
Having read the 2006 and the 2009 plans, this plan is so much better and is ready to be implemented. Having campaigned on sidewalks and bikeways, I'm excited about it. It has a lot of detail that we can actually start working with staff on. We can actually start working with the Planning and Zoning Board on. So, I'm pretty excited to work with you and work with staff on getting some of this done. So, if there's no other comments or questions, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving the 2022 New Bern Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan.
Second.
Have a motion and a second and a discussion. Let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Royal.
Yes. Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Prill?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes. Thank you, Kim.
Thank you all so much, I appreciate it.
All right, item number 10, consider adopting a resolution to approve the sale of 612 Second Avenue. Mr. Hughes?
Rise up New Bern LLC is offer of $2,022 for the purchase of this 612 Second Avenue property. Was advertised, but no upset bids were received. The vacant residential lot is valued at $4,000. This property was acquired jointly by the city and county through tax foreclosure in December of 2016. At that time, unpaid taxes, interest penalties, and costs due to the county were $3,527 and the amount due to the city was $2,850.33. City also has a lien assessment on, on, in the amount of $4,860. If the property is sold at the current amount, the city will receive $988.78 and the county will receive $791.12 from the proceeds.
Board wants to do 11 as well. Ms. Hughes, you want to give us a summary on that one?
Yes, sir. So, the third Property Development and State Investment Group, they made an offer of $9,000 for 208 Daniel Street. The offer was advertised, but no upset bid received. The tax value of the half-acre vacant parcel is $18,000. It was acquired by the city and county in 2019 through tax foreclosure. At that time, taxes, interest penalties, fees, and costs due to the county were $3,596.22 and $713.18 to the city. Earlier this summer, we demolished a mobile home on the property that received flood damage during Hurricane Florence and was beyond repair. In exchange for the demolition, Craven County conveyed the city its interest in the property thus the city will receive all proceeds from the sale.
So, Board, if you wanted to do 10 and 11 together, as long as you're unanimous, we can do that. Any questions?
There's no questions, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the sale of 612 Second Avenue and approve the sale of 208 Daniel Street.
Second.
Have a motion and a second and a discussion. Not, we'll have a roll call, starting with Alderman Astor.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Prill?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number 12, consider adopting a resolution approving a general warranty deed between Habitat for Humanity of Craven County, Menace Mayberry, and the city of New Bern for 1205 Church Street.
In March of 2016, the city approved the conveyance of this property to Habitat for Humanity for the purpose of developing affordable housing for low and moderate income families. Habitat subsequently constructed a home on the property and following board approval in March of 2020, the property was transferred to the buyer. Unfortunately, that buyer has since passed away and the property reverted to Habitat. The board is asked to execute a deed to transfer ownership to a new buyer. By doing so, the city will release any rights retained under a transfer and reversion agreement between the city and Habitat.
Board have questions?
If there's.
Make a motion?
Sure.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve a resolution approving a general warranty deed between Habitat for Humanity of Craven County, Menace Mayberry, and the city of New Bern for 1205 Church Street.
Second.
Have a motion and a second and a discussion. Not, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Kinsey.
Alderman Kinsey? Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Prill?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Item number 13, consider adopting amendments to Section 54, 157, Employee Residency Requirements of the Code of Ordinance. Mr. Hughes?
Mayor and Alderman, currently the residency requirements for department heads is they must live eight miles from the Great Line of City Hall in, in any one direction. And, and that's overall worked out well until we've had our issues with COVID, the economy, the shortage of, of affordable housing in our area and a variety of factors. And what we have found out over the last eight to 10 months, when we have offered certain positions that require relocation, we've had several of our candidates that have had to back out for, for one reason or another, but most of them had revolved around the relocation. Even if they had been within a 30 to 50 mile radius, that has been an issue, especially if, if the candidate had a spouse that was working in commuting in another direction or they had a house they liked and it just was a very difficult decision for them to make. We have seen this requirement drop across the country as well as in this state. Most recently Jacksonville dropped theirs because of the same thing that I am coming to you about. At the end of the day, we would love to have all of our department heads live within the city of New Bern. We, we've got to understand that there are times when, when that can't happen. We, we've got to understand that there are times when, when that can't happen. Also, my goal is to have a department head that is going to be at work on time, perform their duties, represent the city well and be available when there is an emergency or issue. And I'm happy to, to answer the questions or talk about any concerns that you may have.
I have some questions.
Yes, sir.
When the application is sent out, the requirements of living, is all that available for the people? So with that being said, is it any way that you're going to have to probably look forward till you go through all the applications till we can find the right person that is willing to make that move to meet the standards of what we already have in place? How long has this been in place? One year, two years?
The, this current residency requirement?
Yes.
I don't think it's been adjusted, that, that whole thing has been adjusted since maybe 2015 or '16. Some version of that was adjusted back then, I'm not sure exactly what exactly it was.
When you taken the job, did you not have to move?
Yes, sir.
So I feel that it needs to stay the same, that if they want to work here, they would have to meet the requirements. So with that being said, that means that you have to continue to go through the applications till we can find the one that's willing to meet the requirements of the city of New Bern. This is just my take on things.
So, so one of the things we do want to let you know is by chart, the city manager has to live in the city of New Bern. And in, in the recommendation, of course, the city manager, assistant city manager have to, but we are making the recommendation that the public safety, the police chief, fire chief would still have to maintain that residency because of, of the nature of, of their jobs. Any other questions? Does anyone have?
Has this prevented you from hiring a good candidate here recently?
Yes, sir. And it's, it's also been the result of several of, you know, when we advertise for, for certain key positions, that, that residency requirement is in there and, and a lot of our candidates see that, they apply anyway. And then I think ultimately when it gets down to it, when, when a candidate is offered a job and they sit down and talk with their, their family about that, that's, that's when usually things change. Everyone's always anxious to see what happens with, when applying and hopefully if they're offered a position. But yes, we have had several that have declined because of that.
And it's my understanding also through your incident command system, that if we were to have an approaching hurricane or something, all the department heads are required to be at the command center, correct?
That's correct.
So it's not like they would have to travel or anything like that, they're going to already be in town and you provide them with places to stay and they have to stay as long as necessary.
That's correct. If, if, if they're sequestered because of emergency, we're all together with the exception of, of utilities who are in their, in their area down on Cal Road.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with this change in the policy. I agree also that public safety should stay as it is because they are required to respond to emergencies in the city, you know, at all times. But I just don't, and I'm going to use, you know what, I'm going to use our HR director again. I, I just don't understand the necessity for our human resource director to live inside the city or eight miles from the city. I mean, it's not like she's required to jump up at three o'clock in the morning and race to the city limits. I had, I'm, when I came with the department head, I had to live inside the city limits. So this has been a big change back in 2000 and I thought it was 13 or 14 when they gave them the, the eight miles. So it was interesting because I ended up building a house in Tuberna and I had an opportunity to buy a house in Trent Woods, which was a half a mile from the city limits. And I'm like eight miles from the city limits from where I live now, which is in the city. But I just don't think it's necessary. I, I think it's, it's hurting our recruiting and I'll certainly vote for this change.
So what you're saying is that we had another employee that lived in Kinston and because he lived that far away, we didn't change the policy for him. And all of a sudden now we want to change the policy. We have to change the policy for everything then, you know, you can live in Raleigh and work here in New Bern.
Well, if it starts hurting, if it starts hurting our, our ability to hire department heads and senior staff, it's time to look at changing the policy.
How can it hurt it when you have an application that you go through and read? They pretty much already know what the requirements are. So why continue to do something that you already set in place to follow? So you want to change it, how long you think that person is going to work here?
And that's, that's certainly your, your right. I mean, you, you can vote against it if you so too, but I have one question for you.
That's neither here or there.
I have one question for you. What benefit is it for our HR director to live within eight miles of the city? What benefit is it?
Well, it's based on the policy. If they're willing to follow.
Other than the policy, what benefit is it?
I don't know that, that's for you to know. I'm not, I don't have a concern with that. My concern is the policy. Are we going to keep the policy? Are we going to make a policy that we follow? We going to come in and someone say, well, I feel like changing the policy today. I feel that we don't have, that the hiring practices, that the person that wants to work here, they're not willing to change because of what we have in place. We're not trying to please anyone, we're just following the policy that we pass, that's all.
Well, Alderman, Kinsey, I, I agree with you. I don't think that this policy should be changed because number one, you have our department heads, they're instrumental part of the city. We, we have what, eight or nine department heads and, you know, we're, they, they have a really nice salary. And when you look at it and you're taking taxpayers' dollars that live in this city and we're paying those salaries and then those individuals don't live in this city, they live in another county or, you know, that right there is an issue for me. They're taking that type, those tax dollars out of our city and putting them into the city that they're living in. That's the only problem I have with it.
Alderman Best, just, just to clarify, staff, correct me if I'm wrong, but the eight mile rule, you could theoretically live outside of the city but meet the policy.
Yeah.
So I just. So it's possible you could live outside the city limits, but still fit within the eight mile rule that we currently operate under.
But I'm talking about the ones that don't live in the city limits.
Right, that's what I'm saying. So if, if staff were to hire a department head and they live within the eight miles, that may not necessarily be within the city limits. So it could be Bridgeton, correct? So Bridgeton would probably fall within that criteria, so they would actually be a Bridgeton resident, pay Bridgeton taxes, not city of New Bern taxes, but they would meet the current policy as it is today.
Okay, I understand what you're saying, but what I'm saying is if you live in another city, you don't even live in Craven County, you're taking those taxes out of the ci, out of Craven County, out of the city and you're paying them to the city that, that tax, those taxes is going into that city's tax base.
Which is what our current policy allows today.
I understand that, but I'm looking at it from, you, you, we're paying someone six figures and, and that's coming from taxpayers' dollars and those that live outside of the cities making that type of money and I have a problem with that.
Well, I mean, if department head today could probably live in Havelock.
But that's still Craven County. I don't have a problem with, within Craven County. Exactly, I don't have a problem with Craven County. Anything outside of Craven County, I don't think that, I don't, I don't agree with that as being a city employee.
I have a question also. You raised the issue of housing inventory. And any of the recruits or candidates that you have interviewed, did they raise that issue also of inventory as far as housing is concerned?
Yes, they have.
Has it been ongoing or isolated cases or it's been more than a handful?
We have had approximately a handful of offers on this and so probably 50/50 on that. And, you know, some of them may have extenuating circumstances where they had multiple pets and things like that, where they couldn't find a house and they were going to have to go into apartment and the apartment would not accommodate three dogs, for example, things like that.
But isn't it pretty much everywhere though?
Yes, it is.
I, I don't want to go off on a tangent, but this is more of a process question. This is a change to an ordinance. Doesn't require a, a public hearing on this one?
No.
Because it's personnel, is that the?
Only the state, only the state.
Only the state, okay.
As a general rule.
Okay.
Mayor, if I could, I, I fully understand the challenge that staff has having, in my previous life, 30 years being a municipal manager, I've dealt with that issue in other communities. I've also faced that issue personally in communities where a position, you know, was offered and accepted by me and then being informed that, oh, oh, by the way, you're going to have to move to the community. And, and that makes it a, a bit difficult when you are, you know, you have a family, you're, you're having to look at the cost of uprooting a family and moving to the, the new community. And, and in a lot of instances, that community is not offering any relocation assistance. So there is a tremendous financial impact on, on candidates. It stifles the ability to attract the highest quality candidates, which we need to be trying to attract all the time. So I'm comfortable with having flexibility in our policy to be able to adjust policies as trends in this country and circumstances in this country are changing. If we aren't giving ourselves that flexibility, we are going to suffer as an organization over the long term because we are not going to be able to attract the very best people. And we should always be looking to do that, especially at the, the higher management level. So I understand the desire to have these individuals live in the community. The argument that I've, I've had on a number of occasions with people, with elected officials and with residents, is that if they live in the community, they are going to provide a higher level or higher commitment to their position. I, I disagree with that. In any job that I accepted, I committed myself to that position, whether I lived in the community, close to the community or was commuting an hour to get to the community, which I've done. My commitment never wavered. And I think you'll find that to be the case of professionals at the level that we're trying to find. So I'm, I'm comfortable with giving ourselves the ability to attract the best talent that we possibly can.
Well said.
But isn't that the reason why you have policy in place to hire this person? And isn't it that if the ones that you selected is not ready to move, you go to the next application till you find that right person?
Policies are meant to be changed from time to time.
I'm hearing that.
And in these, I mean, we didn't have any problems changing it back in 2013 or 2015 when we were requiring all department heads to live inside the city. And that, that change took place where they could now move out within eight miles. So now it's time to just go a step further with it. It's just.
So you should change the policy for everything then if you're going to start.
Well, if it's for the better of the city, I think we should change the policy.
Oh, I'm going to, I'm going to share a, a personal story and then we'll see how this goes, but I interviewed for a management position, seems like a long time ago now. And when I interviewed, I interviewed in Raleigh and the gentleman that interviewed me said, you do know that it's a requirement that you live in Raleigh? I said, I was aware of that, but I want to talk to you about it. And I told him, I said, if, if you had a gravel driveway and you needed new rock spread in your driveway and you had an individual, you had two individuals that quoted the job and said, I'll get the job done for you. By the time you get home tomorrow night, the rock will be spread. One of them decided they were going to go rent a bobcat and do it in an hour. The other one decided they were going to do it by hand and they spread it with a shoulder. At the end of the day, when you got home, your drive, your gravel driveway had been taken care of and it was completed. Do you really care how it got accomplished? And he looked at me and said, touche. My point is, is what we should be looking at is the performance of the employee and the job that they hold, not where they drove to get to work every day. I truly believe that our staff would hold these individuals accountable if they were late for work, if they called out on numerous occasions. Staff has methods and policies in place to address that. Being in management today, I understand the struggle trying to hire people. It is a challenge. I was at a hospital board meeting this morning, we talked about the challenge of finding good help. Now, the trend in medical is traveling nurses. Nurses are traveling, they're getting paid a lot more to travel, so we're losing nurses that live here to go travel to Greenville and other places because they get paid more. It's just, it's the time that we live in with the workplace and, you know, would it be nice if all of our employees lived in the city? Yeah, it would, you know, maybe we need to give them a, a bonus or a stipend if they did that, but at the end of the day, I won't, and I think everybody wants the best employee for the position. And if that means they live outside of eight miles from the city, of city hall and that, I don't have a problem with it either.
And you made a comment just earlier today about one of our employees that lives in Kinston. Actually, he lives farther away than Kinston, but he's probably one of the most dedicated, honest and loyal employees that this city of New Bern's ever had. And he's at work every morning at 7:30 and he sits in these board meetings until the last, till tonight is his first, well, he was actually here tonight, you know, until 9:30, 10 o'clock every time, what time we get out of here. And man, he's never been late.
Did they change the policy for him?
We didn't have to, he's not a department head.
Well, he chose not to, that's why.
Well, he chose, he, he wasn't a department head, so the policy didn't apply to him anyway.
He was becoming a department head at the time. I'm only speaking on what I know about the position at the time. When I was first elected, the guy, place that he took, he died. So we chose not to put him in the place of a department head.
Mr. Hughes, would you review again what this amendment reads?
Yes, ma'am. So, so basically the proposal is there, there are certain executive staff that are required to live within the city limits. The city manager, the assistant city manager. The recommendation is for the police chief and the fire chief to still remain living within eight miles straight line of city hall. No requirement for the other department heads.
If there is no further discussion, I would like to make a motion to adopt an amendment to section 54-157 Employee Residency Requirements of the Code of the Ordinance.
Second.
Have a motion, have a second, any more discussion? Not, a roll call, starting with Alderman Best.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Prill?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
No.
Mayor Odom?
Yes. Motion passes.
Moving on to number 14, appointments. Board, I think we have some for board of adjustments. We have a couple of alternate seats. Does anybody have any, one for those?
I, for the board of adjustment, I'm still not ready to make that appointment yet.
Okay.
Hopefully I will be by the next board meeting.
Alderman Kinsey, you have?
I have a permanent seat.
Okay.
The name is Eric Jones to the board of adjustment.
Have a motion for Eric Jones for the board of adjustment. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so we have two alternates and then we still have Alderman Best, permanent seat. Any other appointments tonight? All right, attorneys report?
Attorney's report tonight, mayor.
City managers report.
Yes, sir, got a few things to update the board on. First thing is Moon Fest was held over the past weekend and so city staff is all, this is a city sponsored event. city staff is all, this is, this is a city sponsored event. City staff is always involved with, with helping Swiss Bear with this and, this year we had several of our departments that had information booths. Administration was outside city hall all weekend. Uh, we got to talk to a lot of folks and one of the surprising things was how many people are moving to New Bern. We talked to a lot of folks who have just relocated within the last few months and that was exciting to see. The weather was great. It seemed like everyone had a good time. We recommend some changes to Swiss Bear about, about adjusting, uh, some of their activities and when their, their stage and beer garden being in our parking lot beside city hall, that worked out very well. Uh, so, um, we have heard a lot of great comments and we look forward to continue working with Swiss Bear in, in the future. The Mumfest concert is scheduled to be held this Friday at Lawson Creek Park. Lawson Creek Park will be closed this Thursday and Friday as they prepare for that concert. One of the things that we unveiled, uh, from the city side as part of Mumfest was the Resiliency Roadshow. So, um, Development Services was out there in front of Union Point Park. Uh, we had our consultants from Withers Ravenel and they were talking to a lot of folks, uh, getting some good input and also passing out some great information about our resiliency plan. Another item to update you on is the F-11 jet. We have been working with New Roots Historic Restoration for the last at least two months on, on this. They're going to be in town the first of the week to make the repairs, uh, to that jet so we can move on. So we're excited about that. Also want to let you know that, um, regional consolid- re- regional, um, Religious Community Services reached out to us and asked us if we'd be interested in partnering on a grant. The grant amount would be approximately sixty-five thousand dollars. Uh, this is for a HUD Continuum of Care Grant. These grants are designed to promote a community-wide commitment to the goal of ending homelessness. The city would be the applicant and RCS would be the sub-recipient of this grant. Uh, this would also go to additional veteran and family housing and permanent housing support. The grant amount would be sixty-five thousand dollars with no match required. So basically, um, no match required. The city would basically apply for the grant and RCS would be the sub-recipient, similar to how we do with a lot of other grants. So I wanted to bring this up to the board. Um, RCS sent us, uh, a request on this about a week ago. They sent their budget into us, uh, yesterday morning to look at. We think it is a great way to partner with RCS to continue their mission and we wanted to bring that up to you. And then if you had no objection and you wanted to give us direction to proceed with that, we're happy to do so.
Is everybody good with that, board?
Yes, sir.
I would assume so. Yep.
Yes.
Good. Okay. Um, and that's all I have tonight, sir. All right. New business, starting with Alderman Pril.
Just have one thing to report to the board. A couple of weeks ago, I received an email from Lee Purcell of the New Bern Preservation Foundation. He was forwarding a press release that had been received by the National Trust for Historic Preservation, advising, um, the, um, uh, the Preservation Foundation that the King Solomon Lodge Restoration Project was receiving, uh, two grant awards. One in the amount of fifty thousand dollars, uh, the second in the amount of nine thousand dollars, um, towards the, the restoration, the ongoing restoration project. And I know that this Thursday, um, the foundation will be touring the facility with representatives of another foundation, um, which they found, which the Preservation Foundation is applying for additional funding. So I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention and also to, um, ask the, the two aldermen, uh, who have, uh, the ARPA funds, um, still available for, for projects, uh, in the future, um, just ask you to consider, um, the King Solomon Lodge Restoration Project as a, a possible recipient of some of the funding that you have available. And if, if either of you gentlemen would like to tour the facility just to, um, get updated on where that project stands, I'd be more than happy to try to coordinate, uh, you know, that tour. So not asking for you to commit funds right now, I'm just asking you to at least consider it. That's all.
All right. Alderman Royal?
None at this time.
Alderman Aster?
Not a thing, sir.
Alderman Kenzie?
Not this time, sir.
Alderman Best?
Yes. Um, Mr. Shelley, could you please come forward? Um, if you could just give just a little brief overview of the HUD CDBG funding, the process of how it's going to, where, where our citizens be notified of how they can apply for those funds? That it's not through the city. Can you just give a little brief overview of how they need to apply and that it's an income-based project?
Yes, so, um, as I believe we discussed when the funds were announced, uh, we'll be allocating the funds to sub recipients. Uh, and, uh, those sub recipients then would be, um, fielding the applications. Could be the easiest way to put it.
And, and is it an income-based program?
Yes.
Okay. Um, do you also?
And, uh, owner-occupied properties.
Okay. Do you also have an idea of how this information is going to get out to our, to the public, to our citizens?
Yes, so, uh, the funds actually just start becoming available this month, uh, to the city. And then, so now we are gearing up the process of actually announcing to the, um, various organizations for them to apply. Uh, and then there's that process of actually selecting those re- uh, sub recipients. And then at that time, they would be able to, because none of them know who they are yet, who's been selected. And then they would be able to announce at that time, uh, when the applications from the residents would be taken in.
So the city will also make that announcement to the public when the city chooses those sub recipients?
Oh, yeah, we can, yes, absolutely.
So then I go on our, the website, city's website, Facebook and all that to notify?
I would think so unless it's against some policy that I don't know about.
Press release will be issued with that. And, and just to give you another update, we've been looking at the information that staff has been providing. We've asked for some more clarification. So, uh, when the nonprofit applicants, uh, look at the information, they're going to see what the criteria is, how much, uh, they have allocated for each house and things like that. So, so it's going to be very specific information. Also, if a sub recipient is selected for this, they have training that they're going to have to go through, uh, to make sure that they fall in line with, with requirements of CGPG funding.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Shelley and, um, Mr. Hughes.
Mr. Shelley, for the people that is listening at home, is it any way that you can give them a number that they can call? A telephone number?
Uh, so, um, so I guess I thought I just said that the, um, the residents would be contacting the sub recipients uh, once those sub recipients have been selected.
I just want maybe you had a number?
Yeah, so we don't, we don't have a number. We don't know who it is.
That's all I was asking.
Okay, yeah. I'm sorry.
I heard that part, but I, I didn't know if you knew a number.
But, but Alderman Kenzie, if any, any citizens do have any questions about that, they can reach out to city hall. We're happy to route them to the appropriate department who, who maintain this and they will get that information out to you.
Yeah, I'm just doing it for the people that is listening, you know, you know, some people need a little push, a little boost, a little bit more information. Trying to, you know, reach everybody.
Sorry, I guess that was, that was a much better answer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't, don't leave. Please. I just want to say, um, thank you, uh, Mr. Shelley, to you, your staff, Ms. Margaret Shields, the grant writer, for securing that, uh, almost, you just would say, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the, uh, East Rose Street pump project. Thank you. Um, it's well, it's well needed. I think this is going to really help with our flood mitigation, um, efforts over in that area. So just thank you to you and your staff.
Okay. Um, well, you're welcome, except that, um, actually George Childs worked with Margaret on that one. Uh, so that's really a thing. I'll pass that one on to George.
I'll keep you straight.
Yeah, right.
Well, thank you. That's it, sir.
Alderman Brunson?
Nothing, thanks, sir.
All right. That's all the new business. I, I did want to mention, um, it came up this morning at another meeting. Our board meeting on November the eighth is election day. It's obviously not our election day. Uh, but sometime in the past, boards have chosen to move that meeting. I don't think we have to make that decision tonight, but if you just want to think about that, if the board decides that they would like to have that on a different night, we can make that, uh, decision at our next board meeting. So just be thinking about that. Do we need a closed session?
Can, can we, can we give us that table now?
Uh, yeah, sure. Mayor Outlaw, um, is doing much better than he was a week or so ago. Uh, for those that were out and about at Mumfest, you might have seen him. Uh, he walked around for, I don't know, two or three hours. I would say I saw him driving his truck today, but I don't think he's supposed to, so I'm not going to say that. Uh, but he is doing much better and, uh, he was very much appreciative for all the prayers and the thoughts that, uh, the city extended to him.
Thank you.
Do we need a closed session?
Yes.
Yes, uh, mayor, pursuant to, uh, one forty-three, three, ten, eleven, A three, to maintain our attorney-client privilege to discuss, um, potential economic development incentives, um, pursuant to one forty-three, three, ten, eleven, A four. Um, and also to discuss the potential acquisition of real property pursuant to one forty-three, three, ten, eleven, A five.
Now a motion?
Send it.
Have a motion, have a second?
Second, sir.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're now in closed session.